...prevents flooding and reduce storm water by capturing and storing rainwater and snowmelt, which is then slowly released to our lakes, streams, and groundwater. And whereas careful management of our forest is one of the best ways to protect drinking water and reduce the cost of water treatment. And whereas sound management of forested public land surrounding the Mississippi River ensures clean drinking water for more than a million Minnesotans. And whereas about three quarters of Minnesota get their drinking water from forested parts of the state. And whereas planting trees is a natural way to keep our water clean. And whereas the last Friday in April and throughout the month of May, Minnesotans pay special tribute to our trees as natural resources and re-dedicate ourselves to the vitality of our forests. Now therefore I, Thomas Dean, Mayor of Austin, Minnesota, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 27th, as Arbor Day. And I do hereby proclaim the month of May 2018 as Arbor Day in the month of the city of Austin. Kim, did you want to say a few words?
Thank you.
You sure?
We are planting a tree.
Oh, you're where?
You said like at the tree track.
Okay.
On the 27th. The snow goes away.
What's that?
On the 27th.
That could be a while. I think we're going to get somewhere.
Twenty-seventh of April?
Yes.
Oh, you're so confident.
Okay, and then number four is a motion for the consent agenda.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? How many people are here tonight for this ambulance spot? Do you want to... Okay, why don't... Is there no objections? We'll move that to next. There's a lot of people here for that. That's sixteen. Rather than make way to half hour, twenty minutes? We'll deal with that right away. Reviewing a rezoning request by Gold Cross Ambulance. Holly?
During the April 10th, 2018, meeting of Austin Planning Commission, the commission reviewed a request from Gold Cross Ambulance on behalf of the property owner, Bruce Brodler, regarding a property located at 1404th Street Northwest to amend the future land use plan from suburban low density to mixed use and to rezone the property from R1 single-family residential to B2 commercial. This action was requested to accommodate newly proposed $2 million ambulance service to replace the existing operation on Oakland Avenue West, which is inadequate. The proposed location is adjacent to 4th Street Northwest with Hardee's to the north and approximately nine single-family residences to the east and south. Several neighbors appeared at the planning meeting with the majority opposing the rezoning request. At least one neighbor expressed concerns but felt those concerns were being addressed by Gold Cross. Some support for the project has been expressed since that meeting from members of the public who were not in attendance at the planning meeting. However, the planning commission did, with all members present, recommend the council deny the rezoning request by the following vote: nine in favor and zero opposed. The planning commission found that the proposed land use change was not consistent with their comprehensive future land use plan and that it was not compatible with the surrounding uses and zoning. Just getting to my backup material here. Is everybody familiar with the location? I believe most of the people here were present at the planning commission meeting, although if the council is not familiar, it's the property to the south of Hardee's on 4th Street Northwest. There are representatives here from Gold Cross and also neighbors who I believe might like to describe... I believe Gold Cross would like to say some things about the project, and I think the neighbors as well would like to respond.
Who's here from Gold Cross? Are you the spokesman?
Yes, sir.
Why don't you come on up and give us your name? And you live in Austin?
No, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name's Chris...
You need your name and where you live.
Yeah, I'm Chris Kalchun. I live in Cleveland, Minnesota, and I'm the regional operations manager for Gold Cross Ambulance.
Okay.
If it would please the council, I do have some information to share with the council. This information I would describe as being sensitive with great ramifications to the future of emergency medical response in the city of Austin. And the decisions made tonight are going to have the potential to have a great impact on the city's capacity for emergency response. It was not known that there would be the level of steadfast objection at the planning council meeting. Therefore, at that meeting, I was not prepared to share these details or project background because it was not clear at that time that there was such opposition. First thing I'd like to say is that I'm here today to advocate on behalf of your community. Gold Cross Ambulance has been serving the city of Austin since 1996. We are a not-for-profit ambulance service. We're a wholly-owned subsidiary of Mayo Clinic, and all of our revenue is directed back into our operations and also medical education and research. Tonight, the words I would use to describe this situation to you, although the requests came forward to planning and zoning as a rezoning matter, the background information behind this project is that the project is intended to rectify an urgent medical need within the community that we have observed. I don't use that word lightly. It's not meant to scare members of the community, but we are experiencing at this point in time some very significant challenges with regard to providing emergency medical care in the community. And it was deemed that this facility and this investment in the community was essential to continuing to provide the high level of service that the citizens of the community have become accustomed to. Our understanding of the city ordinance is that the action tonight on the first reading of the proposed rezoning requires unanimous support of the council, and therefore the decision made tonight has the potential to have a very long-term detrimental effect on the community's ambulance service, which I'll explore here in a little bit greater The history of this project is we've been actively pursuing identifying funds and a site for this project for about the last 12 to 18 months. There's several reasons for that. The current facility that we're in is undersized. It no longer meets the need for the number of ambulances or staff that are needed to provide service to the community. It's in a very, I'd say, less-than-ideal location in terms of street access, parking, and other reasons. So during the last 12 to 18 months, we've been actively working with our project architect, Brunton Architects, as well as tech builders and facilities, resources within the Mayo Clinic. We've explored numerous options for sites around the city. There have been multiple realtors that have been involved in those property searches. The city staff has forwarded some potential sites as well for consideration or redevelopment. And the bottom line is, the only real suitable piece of property within the community is the property that we're discussing tonight. All other options were explored to great detail. Many of them had architectural site plans completed to verify that the site was adequately sized, et cetera. The current location that we're in has a number of issues. As I alluded to, size is a primary concern. We do not have enough space for the number of personnel that we currently need, and we're anticipating that within the 12... Next 12 to 18 months is that we're going to need a significant number of additional personnel. Also, with regard to size, includes the physical size of the building with regard to ambulances. We have been the victims, I won't say targets, I think it was acts of random violence with regard at our current location.
Violence or vandalism?
Employees' vehicles have been vandalized within the last six to nine months. And I apologize for the profane nature. My intent wasn't to demonstrate the profanity as much as just the sort of things that have been going on. In regards to the violence, we've had blood detected spilled from some sort of act of violence with blood physically on the building. The building has been egged. And again, I don't think that we're targets as much as it's just a poor location. Parking is a challenge. There's about two or three parking stalls for off-street parking. So the building is typically occupied between four and six personnel at any point in given time. So much of the parking is off-street. Snow removal is a challenge for the same reason as it takes up some of the parking areas. I mentioned the one-way street access on Oakland, which is sometimes a challenge. And the technology is very much limited in the building, given the age of the structure, which is also old and deteriorating. Again, the sites that we have proposed, the site that we've been considering on 4th Street is almost ideally situated within the community in terms of its response area. So on the map that I have up on the screen, the... There's a... It's hard to see, but there's a picture of a little ambulance there. The red shaded ring and the blue shaded rings represent response times. So everything within the red is one-minute response. Everything within the blue ring is five-minute response times. And so our goal with site selection was data-driven. It was not intended to be directly in the center of town. Instead, its location aims to get to the highest number of calls or the highest greatest concentration of calls within the shortest period of time, which this site does. All of the dots on the map are ambulance calls within the city of Austin from March of last year through March of this year. It also affords easy access to Interstate 90 and the hospital, which are very key for our operations. Again, the rural area that we service immediately outside the city limits requires that access to Interstate 90. In addition to the interstate, proximity to the hospital is another key driver for us for several reasons. One is that the future of healthcare is really changing. Many, many communities across the country are moving towards a model of care which provides for community paramedicine or mobile integrated healthcare, in which the paramedic providers work very, very closely with the primary care physicians in the community. And that relationship requires a lot of interaction and collaboration. And so geographically, there's many, many advantages to being close to the providers. The other key thing with being close to the hospital for us is that I mentioned some of the technology challenges with regard to network connectivity and bandwidth. And there's a great advantage to us to take advantage of the Mayo Clinic network, computer network, which is located at the hospital. This location would provide us with a direct network connection to the hospital for all of our computer and telecommunications needs, which are greatly increasing. The scope of the project... The scope of the project is that it comes with a budget of $2.14 million. It's a significant investment in the community. We intend it to demonstrate our long-term commitment to the community. Although we are not-for-profit, we do pay property taxes. We have not had direct discussions with the county, but we suspect, based on some of our other properties throughout the southern part of Minnesota, that that probably comes out to be about $30,000 to $40,000 a year for commercial property taxes that we would be paying to the community. The lifespan of the facility is anticipated to be 45 to 50 years. We're not building or don't propose to build a cheap facility. We intend this to be state-of-the-art that meets the needs of the community today and well into the future. In addition, the facility will provide us with the ability to have a command center in the event of a natural disaster that can be utilized by multiple public safety entities within the community, both as a shelter and as a base of operation should the need arise. One of the largest challenges that we face currently is a staffing shortage. There is a nationwide staffing shortage. Our service in particular has some of the most competitive pay and benefit structure anywhere in the upper Midwest. That's not the issue. A lot of times, the issue comes down to physical space, and it's very, very difficult for us to recruit new talent into the community when they're presented with the current building that we're in, as well as some of the challenges that we've had within the neighborhood. On the map here, the proposed site that we have... Not the most technologically adept person, but I think we can make that bigger. Across the street is the QuickTrip gas station here. This is the intersection with 13th Avenue and the Hardee's Restaurant directly to the north. Our intent was to try to use the building as somewhat of a buffer zone between the... I know it's not the correct terminology, but the denser commercial uses to the north and west and somewhat of a buffer to the residential areas to the south and to the east. All access for the building would occur off of 13th Avenue. The design or layout of the parcel was designed in such a way as to minimize the impact on the neighborhood to the greatest extent possible. Ambulances, the garage portion is to the north of the property, keeping the noisiest part of the facility up towards the Hardee's and QuickTrip to the greatest extent possible. The garage stalls would intend to be drive-through stalls so that we eliminate any backing of vehicles, so you don't have to have that constant backup beepers and things. It's hard to see on the plan, but there were some plans for large trees and arborvitae-type shrubs along the south to isolate the residential areas. And the eastern half of the property would remain as-is, kind of that wooded area. One of the other benefits is with the ambulances exiting towards the west is that should there be any noise, is that the intent would be to direct that as much as possible back into the commercial areas. I apologize for the quality of the pictures. They're not the best, but this is a building that we built last year in Albert Lee, which would be very, very similar in design to the building that we're proposing to build here. So it's a mix of brick or commercial-type construction along with kind of some of the siding and residential feel. On the site that we're looking at, the office or residential part of the building would be the part that would be to the south with the garage being to the north. And a little bit of a daylight picture to show some of the aesthetic characteristics of the building. The condition of the property where we are proposing to build is very poor. This is the front, the very front of the residence that we're proposing to demolish should the project be able to move forward. Very clearly, there's holes in the foundation. The front door is literally being propped closed with a crutch. Again, more holes. It's hard to see here with the glare, but you're looking at about a five-inch hole or four-inch hole or so. Most likely caused by woodpecker, but it would indicate to us with the holes in the foundation and in the roof that the building is most likely full of vermin and woodpeckers and bats. Gutters are falling off. Sidings falling off. Windows are rotten. In a survey of the property finds garbage and debris laying all over the property. We find it very unlikely that this would be a suitable residential investment for anyone. The price of the property is $250,000, just based on the damage to the outside of the building that we can observe. It's not hard to imagine that you could spend another $200,000 fixing it up, making it livable, without even considering what problems or issues might be inside the structure. So from a residential perspective, if you could spend $450,000, at the end of the day, you still have a drafty 100-year-old farmhouse. So it doesn't seem like it's probably a worthwhile investment for somebody from a residential perspective. Based on the feedback that we heard at the planning commission, it didn't seem that for at least some of the neighbors in attendance that there would be any commercial development that would be acceptable to the neighborhood. That being the case, if it's not a great residential investment and we can't move forward with the ambulance facility there, it seems very likely to us that the building would probably continue to sit vacant and then be in disrepair. We did try to... I did try to personally meet with as many of the neighbors as I could to share the project with them, to hopefully hear what concerns they have and see what things we could collaborate on to mitigate those concerns. I think the difference from our perspective is that we don't want to just be a business operating in the neighborhood, but we want to be part of the neighborhood and be a good The risks of not moving forward with this project, what I started out to mention, again, with the staffing and recruiting challenges that we have with the current facility, the size of the facility and it being too small to add the number of staff we need is a major problem for us. We currently, today, have five full-time paramedic openings and anticipate in the next 12 to 18 months that we need to hire eight more full-time people. With the current environment and the facility and the condition it's in, we simply have a very, very difficult time recruiting emergency staff to the community in those conditions. For that purpose, the project has a urgent and real need, in our estimation. We have noted that there have been, because of staffing shortages, very often some of our staff are working 70 to 80 hours a week, trying to keep the schedule filled. These are people that are very dedicated. They live and work in the community of Austin, many of whom have worked for the ambulance service for a very long time. That pace is simply not sustainable for the long term to ask team members to work those number of hours. So it's very essential to us that we recruit and hire additional people to keep up with the increasing call demand in the city. The complicating factor is the purchase agreement that we've entered into with the property owner. Again, I feel we've done more than our due diligence to consider all possible available sites within the community. Our purchase agreement has written that it's contingent upon successful permits and zoning challenges with the city being resolved by May 15th. If we do not have those criteria met, the purchase agreement goes away, the earnest money that we paid goes away, and the property potentially would be back on the market and not available to us. This is further complicated by our budgeting process. Although we are a wholly-owned subsidiary of Mayo Clinic, we are a separate corporation. We have our own capital budgeting process, and we've budgeted for or have the funds available for this project now at this point in time. There are competing priorities within our system for capital monies. And so since we probably will not have a definitive resolution on this project before that budgeting process begins, it's very unlikely that there will be capital funds available for next year and subsequent years, 2020 and beyond. There's no guarantee that that capital funds will be allocated, again, based on those competing priorities. So it puts us in a little bit of a pickle that if the project shouldn't move forward this year, there is no guaranteed funding that I can stand here today and say is coming for the project, which, given the current challenges that we face and the staffing difficulties, potentially has the possibility of jeopardizing our ability to continue to meet the response time expectations of the community. I don't say that in a light term. We did not get into those details at the planning commission, again, because we're not prepared to do so, nor did we think it would become an issue at that meeting. So from a budgeting perspective and a service perspective, this meeting tonight has very real potential implications for emergency service coverage in the community, potentially for a period of many years.
So I'd like to get a little clarification on that point. I've read all your material. You're essentially saying that either council approves the rezoning against the recommendation of the planning commission tonight, or the project goes away. There's no project?
I'm saying that if the council does not approve the rezoning tonight, and we're not able to arrive at some sort of zoning condition that would enable the purchase agreement to be executed in the closing of the property by May 15th, that there's no guarantee this property would continue to be available. We need to have the funds spent that we have budgeted this year. The project would need to be completed by this year. So if that...
But sir, I think in my question, kind of piggybacking on Councilmember Helly's, is that my take of what I'm hearing is that you're saying this site or no site, nothing will change. Or are you implying that Gold Cross Ambulance will no longer serve Austin?
No, 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 not at all.
Because it just seems... I'm not being able to comprehend that it is the only site in the city of Austin that could work for Gold Cross.
Well, and further, I don't guess that you just started noticing your current facilities are inadequate 18 months ago. I would guess you've known for some years that your current facilities were being outgrown.
Sure. So if I could clarify...
So you've been working on it for 18 months, and you knew before that, but now you've come before us as a council, and you know, I'm getting the feeling that if something isn't resolved tonight, no project. Is that incorrect? I feel like I'm not sure why we have to rush and can't go through a process.
I understand completely. If I could clarify a few of the points, there is no male or evil intent in my being here tonight. We've known for some time that we've needed to make facility improvements. We've been working towards that end. And to clarify the 18-month portion, we've said a better way is that for the last 18 months, we've been actively working on the planning for a new facility. Not that the need arose within the last 18 months. The need was identified for that, but we were not in a position to actively work towards the budgeting and the project design. We've been doing that within the last 18 months. Part of the work that we've been undertaking in the last 18 months is working to identify potential sites within the community. Those were the sites where we've... What we feel is exhausted other options with multiple realtors. City staff had recommended some sites. We also considered those. And when I say there's no other sites in the community, there's no other sites that...
That can fit the footprint that you want.
Well, the physical size of the building is an issue because we can't just take a single residential lot and use that.
We understand.
But what I'm trying to say is, when we're going to make a $2.2 million investment in the community, we want to make sure that it's strategically positioned to be able to get emergency services to the residents as quickly as possible, as efficiently as possible. So there are other commercial sites within the community that would be physically large enough, but they're out of kind of that ideal window. And so when we're looking at the long-term viability of where does it make the most sense to put the facility, this is the option that rises to the surface as being most viable because of its location and those criteria.
But you must have a Plan B in case it isn't.
I can stand here and look you in the eye, ma'am, and say, of the other sites in the community that we've looked at, there is not a Plan B. It's not for lack of trying. We've... I would love to have had two or three other... We've, I would love to have had two or three other really viable options that really would have met the needs of the community. We just were not physically able to find those other options.
How many calls do they go out of that, out of your ambulance service?
Sure. So within the average 24-hour period, there's about 12 calls per day.
Okay, and are these all lights and sirens?
No.
I'm assuming most of the people here are neighbors. I mean, at 3:00 in the morning, is an ambulance going to be going out, lights and sirens? And, you know, how are you going to do that, not, I mean, I live by St. Mark's Nursing Home, I go up all the time.
Yeah, understood. So of those 12 calls approximately today, I think it comes out to be 4,122 last year. More than half of those were intra-facility transfers from one hospital to another hospital, which are non-emergency calls.
How many would be code three and what's your procedure for that?
About 5.25 a day. And by day, I mean 24-hour period. And about 2/3rds of those occur during the daytime interval with 1. something occurring on an average 24-hour period in the overnight interval.
But it is procedure to go red lights and siren as soon as you leave the building?
Not necessarily, no. We across, we've got multiple locations across Minnesota and Iowa, many of which are in residential areas, we're very much accustomed to trying to minimize that impact. So I foresee, especially in the overnight interval when there's little to no traffic on 4th Street, that it's very likely the ambulance might be blocks away before the siren would ever be needed.
Okay, and any site you say would have to be centrally located, does that mean in the city of Austin, probably within a neighborhood where if you did it there, we'd have just as many people from another neighborhood coming in saying, "I don't want it in my backyard"?
Well, the speculation on my part, but potentially, yeah.
I was surprised myself that the Planning Commission turned this down at least unanimously like that, but go ahead, finish.
Sure.
Well, I have one question. You know, you talked about street access.
Mm-hmm.
And what I don't understand is why you would have an emergency building that has street access to the most congested street in Austin. That scares me a little bit. That'd be kind of a safety issue, wouldn't it?
I can tell you that we have multiple facilities across Minnesota and Wisconsin that are located on streets with far busier traffic counts than what I have personally observed on 4th Street. The general thought process, I would think, and our architect is here as well, has built many public safety facilities across the Midwest, can speak to as well. Generally speaking, you want that sort of traffic on a main arterial road. You wouldn't want to take an emergency facility and put it on a side street or on a cul-de-sac somewhere because of those street access areas. So our goal would be to try to get the shortest, quickest route to any emergency call that might occur within the community, and therefore the arterial streets make sense for us. Councilmember Helly, so to, I don't think I completely answered your question, I apologize for that, I haven't forgotten about you. So I realize the appearance might be that we're here before the council saying, "Tonight is make or break." We would have been, had we known there would be the level of opposition that there had been in the community, had we known that level of opposition would have been there, we certainly would have been dialoguing much sooner. Very honestly, we never once anticipated this level of contention with some of the neighbors. And in fact, in my 20-plus years of public service in EMS, I've never observed that level of contention. So that's not to minimize the concerns of the neighborhood in any way. We very much would like the opportunity to work with the neighbors to mitigate their concerns. But I wanted to be completely open and transparent with you, that if for some reason we can't move this project forward in a short timeframe, there are going to be some repercussions that are beyond our control that we're going to have to figure out how to manage.
Well, having listened to the planning and zoning meeting on YouTube and also having been a commissioner on planning and zoning for a few years, I think the group came to the conclusion that a conditional use permit was much more appropriate for this project in this area. And I would have to agree, I think that the 4th Street, that particular address at this time in Austin's development is a very sensitive place, and I think the conditional use permit's a better tool for the neighbors to get some protections and the project to still go forward. We can't vote on a conditional use permit, it has to go to planning and zoning and then back up to us. So tonight, we can only either overturn planning and zoning and approve the rezone, which is a forever rezone. When Gold Cross goes away, some other neighbor comes in there and gets all the freedoms of the new zone and no protection. Or we can deny it, and I feel like especially your materials are painting the picture that by denying it, the project goes away, potentially Gold Cross leaves the community, and certainly your response times are going to be dangerous.
Sure.
And some bad outs.
Yeah, absolutely. So I hear everything you're saying. First of all, and most importantly, I am in no way suggesting that Gold Cross leaves the community. We are here for the long term, that's why we're intent on making the investment in the community that we're making, and if it came across that way, that is not at all what I'm trying to say. We will have some significant challenges if the project doesn't move forward with regard to what do we do about a facility, the budgeting piece. And certainly, if the staffing recruitment issue isn't resolved, it certainly will potentially contribute to some delays in response that we need, will need to work on a plan to manage those things for sure. I would add that the decision to request a rezone was made in consultation with the city planning and zoning staff, and it was their recommendation that we move forward with the rezone versus using the conditional use permit. So that was not a decision that we made on our own, we were following the recommendations of city staff.
So if tonight, this council upholds the decision of planning and zoning and denies the rezone, will you be able to go back, apply for the conditional use permit? Essentially, it's a four-week delay. Is a four-week delay going to, I know you can't make any promises, but to me, is a four-week delay going to kill your project? Would you not extend the purchase agreement?
Well, potentially. Yeah, I'm not saying we can't. We will not be able to close by the date on the purchase agreement on May 15th. We won't be able to meet that deadline. That would cause us to certainly have to go back and have a conversation with the property owner and their attorney, and it's only speculation if they would be willing to extend that or not. We, you know, if this doesn't move forward, I assure you that I'll be scheduling a meeting with our team bright and early tomorrow morning so that we can discuss next options. But we would have, we would have no intention of abandoning the community of Austin.
It seems like there would be, you know, locations, just for example, I mean, and you've done your due diligence to look at other locations, so like if you go adjacent to the existing YMCA, which is now protect, no longer in the flood plain, those are other areas that are, that seem like, right, it's an arterial, it's just a few blocks away from where you're proposing to be now. So, I mean, I'm just saying, that's why it's kind of mind-boggling to think that there aren't some suitable other locations that are very close to the hospital.
Understood. We did, just for a point of clarification, we did review the YMCA site. Timing-wise, they're still operating there, so it's-
No, I didn't mean on that exact property, I mean, right by it there, so I don't know how big that lot is.
We did look at several options, right, in that immediate neighborhood, and we had civil engineers look at some of them. There was concerns about the flood wall and flooding in the emergency facility. We also looked at the YMCA. So there were multiple properties, right, in that immediate area, I suspect the ones you're talking about that were evaluated.
Brian, I know you had a few things you wanted to bring up. Are there any more questions? Marv, I'll get to you when we do the public comments, okay? Marv?
Fairness to all these people. I believe, unless we go to midnight, some other people need a chance to give their point of view rather than they're being held hostage to some of these views that have been given here by Gold Cross.
We moved it up to number one, to hurry, to try and expedite this as quickly as we can, and everybody will have an opportunity. You're right, we might go to midnight, but if that's the case, then that's what we'll do. Brian, did you have any, I mean, are we, any more questions for this gentleman? Otherwise, Brian, I know you would talk to me a little bit about some issues. And you'll be, you're sticking around because you'll be subject to questions if the-
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions from the public or the council.
Just a second.
Yes, I just would like to say that I've been with the police department for the last 34 years, last eight as chief, and I don't recall seeing the issues or some of the concerns we've had from a public safety standpoint with Gold Cross not being able to send an ambulance for 20 to 30 minutes, partly, obviously because of their staffing issues. And if a major part of this is the current facilities, which I have been in and they are not good to begin with, so if a new building would enable them to staff and get enough paramedics to handle calls, I would certainly hate being a part of public safety to see a bad turnout because an ambulance couldn't get there for 20 to 30 minutes because of the staffing, because of those current conditions. And I guess coming from a law enforcement perspective, personally, this is my opinion, I think this is a good location. Obviously, their current location is just off of West Oakland Avenue. People have to understand when an ambulance does go code three, it's a matter of seconds before they get into the streamline of traffic and they're down the road. Obviously, during noon hour, I know 4th Street very well, for them to get out of their building and onto the roadway, traffic will stop. They'll either head north or south, or can get on the freeway going east or west. As far as locations, from a public safety standpoint, I think this is a good one.
Thank you. Okay, was there anything else? Did you have any other people with you that wanted to put forth any, anything?
I would like to volunteer, our project architect, just to comment very, very briefly on some of the property transition areas that we're thinking, as well as some of his experience with regard to public safety facilities.
Corey Brunton, 19 Eagle Ridge Court, North Mankato. Also the CEO and President of Brunton Architects and Engineers. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak. As Chris had mentioned, I do have a fair amount of experience in designing public emergency response facilities. We've done a fair amount of projects for Gold Cross. Some of the things that we're hearing tonight, we have heard in other communities to much less extent. Some of the things that we have offered up in regards to design modifications to allow these facilities to be a little bit more aesthetically and scale-wise more appropriate to the neighborhoods. We've applied brick details, we've applied a fair amount of architectural treatments to those facilities to bring the architectural scale down and actually make it more complimentary to the residential neighborhoods that were adjacent to it. And this facility would share those same amenities as well. So I think, you know, I happen to, as Councilmember Helly has mentioned, that you actually sat on the planning and zoning board. I too sit on the planning and zoning board, and I've been in these meetings, these contentious meetings, where we've had, you know, several people, 20, 30 people in opposition. It's difficult, it's difficult to hear what you need to hear and not be able to react necessarily to your heart in some of these things. We are looking at this project as, is this a benefit to the community and is this a safe location for this facility? We don't like spot zoning, right? That's a big no-no in planning and zoning. And so this facility being adjacent to a number of commercial districts makes it a very good transitional zoning. Now, this building is seeking a rezoning, yes, that's true. And we could go through the conditional use permit, and we could be back here in front of you in a month asking for the same thing, and being equally willing to accommodate any requests of the city relative to aesthetics, plantings, screenings, lighting, safety, et cetera. And we have done that in other communities. I'm here to tell you that you'd be hard-pressed to find a better neighbor and a better transitional building type to occupy that lot, especially when you consider the economic limitations that are up against it, with its purchase price and with it not being a very viable project for any developer to come in and try to revamp that. Having Gold Cross with the scale of residential architectural building type on the south side of the lot, and having the ambulance bays, which respond, as Chris mentioned, to the west with any noise that would occur, being pushed more to the commercial district, allowing all of the woods that are to the east to remain and providing screening to the south, it's going to be pretty hard to find somebody that's going to be willing to do that with the scale of this particular project. So we're, yes, we are passionate about this location, we have explored many others. And the number one thing that we want to remember is that safety is always the key element for placement of these facilities. Number one, response times for sure, but safe exiting of the ambulance out onto the street is key. In order to have a good lot do that, the building has to be as close as it can be to the street, and it has to have great visibility. And if I look at the site plan, which is not there, having the ambulances come out a drive and be fully visible before they enter the street is absolutely key. This lot doesn't have a lot of trees on the Boulevard right there, it's actually just perfect for this. It's located next to Hardee's, which is, you could say, is a more noisy user. Thank you. It's actually a great neighbor to these, to this residential district, and in my opinion, a highly transitional use. So as I stated earlier, this section of the building, right here on the south, is like a, it's like an apartment building, if you will, a duplex. There's only two sleeping rooms in there, there's some offices, but it's got a much smaller architectural scale. And if you want to see what the facility looks like, what's planned, you can go to Albert Lee and look at it right across from a city park. There are adjacent residences to that facility as well.
So I'm going to sort of lay my cards on the table and say that I agree, I think this is a really good site for the ambulance service, which is important to our community.
Right.
I think that it would be safe, I think it actually would enhance property values compared to what's there now.
Agreed.
However, as you said, Gold Cross is a very good neighbor. We know that. If we rezone and Gold Cross moves on again in 10 years or 20 years or 30 years, there's no guarantee we'd get another good neighbor. That's why I think the conditional use permit is more appropriate at this time for this project. And I understand, you guys did what the city staff recommended-
Yeah.
And now we're basically asking you to start over. But we don't know that it would be sold to a similar good neighbor. And maybe by the time that happens, maybe by 10 years, we would be ready to rezone. And the neighbors who are today concerned would have the same concern. That's why, you know, that's why we have a whole process for rezoning and changing things.
Hi.
So I guess I feel like you, I agree with everything you're saying, and it makes me more convinced that the conditional use permit is the right tool for this particular issue, this project.
In defense of Gold Cross, I don't feel that they would invest $2.2 million in a project to walk away from it after soon they're developing it, recognizing that they've already explained that they've been in this process for looking for a lot. They do need something that's larger to accommodate their space needs and to provide safety ambulance services for your community. I understand exactly where you're coming from. Again, I sit on that side of the table and I understand the tools that are used in the planning and zoning, and I get that. My question to you is, what changes in 30 days if we are willing to make all, other than the fact that the parcel is labeled with the change in zoning? Which the commercial business to the north and across the street all have that commercial zoning. I can't tell you that, you know, in 75 years, if this building needs to be rebuilt, that there might not be a change to that, but we also don't know, we can't, we don't have a crystal ball for that. I can tell you that- I can tell you this, that the building design, no matter who owns it, will have to make use of the building the way it's laid out. And having control of that card right now pretty much assures you that even if Gold Cross were to leave that building in fifteen, twenty, or thirty years, somebody's going to be hard-pressed to pay the amount of money they're going to have to pay to get it, to make any kind of a significant change that would function differently than the way this building would function on site. So I understand that. And unfortunately, and as Chris mentioned, we're in a unique situation here, and we want to do what we need to do. And had we had the foresight to choose the conditional use permit, we're all over it. Because right now and today, and everything you see here is a direct result of open and clear conversations with the city to accommodate both today the needs of this intersection as well as the future. So, I hope I've cleared that up for you, and thank you for your time.
Okay, obviously we have some people who wants to, who would like to make a statement? How many? Come on up, give us your name and your address and your concerns.
I'm Chi Chi Mosher, and my address is 1304 Fourth Street Northwest. You've received a similar copy of this, but for the benefit of people that weren't at the planning and zoning, I want to read it. We received a visit from Gold Cross representative Christopher Kelton on Friday, April 6th, informing us that his company was pursuing a zoning change for property located at 1400 Fourth Street Northwest here in Austin. Our home is located directly south and adjacent to this property. We received a letter on April 9th from Holly Wallace regarding this Austin City Council hearing on April 16th. This letter incorrectly designated Gold Cross as the current property owner, making it sound like the deal was done, and area residents would have no voice in the rezoning process. This incorrect ownership of the property was also published in the Austin Daily Herald on April 6th. We had not been informed of the rezoning meeting until my husband spoke with Holly the day before the meeting. Several area residents attended and voiced concerns at the rezoning meeting on April 10th. After listening to the Gold Cross representative, planning and zoning director Holly Wallace, and area residents, the commission voted unanimously to recommend not rezoning this property. We appreciated their listening to all the pros and cons voiced. We've lived at our residence since January 1996. We've enjoyed the neighborhood and the convenient location of our home, which was a major factor in our decision to purchase it. Of course, being new to the community, we had no idea what kind of traffic flowed down Fourth Street. As you consider the commission's recommendation to not rezone this property, we would like to share our concerns. We've made a sizable investment in our home, located in a residential district, and to rezone adjacent property would negatively affect our property value, as well as those of our neighbors. There are many commercial sites available within Austin that would not hinder the future valuation of residential properties. A study was done years ago that determined Fourth Street carried enough traffic to warrant a four-lane street rather than a two-lane street. Trying to ease the traffic congestion, the decision was made to add a stoplight, re-figure an intersection, and add turning lanes at various points along the street. From our experience of entering Fourth Street from our driveway or exiting Fourth Street into our driveway when coming from the north, the problem has not improved, and in fact seems worse. There is an almost continual stream of traffic that often exceeds the thirty mile-per-hour speed limit, making entering and exiting our driveway dangerous. This increase is due in part to the opening of Hardee's directly north of the property being considered, and Subway, which is across the street from our home. Our current way to enter or exit our driveway is a rare fifteen seconds to a more common one to two and a half minutes. Our area is used throughout the day by walkers. There's no sidewalk north of the bridge on the west side of Fourth Street. We have seen some dangerous situations as elderly people and mothers with children try to cross Fourth Street in order to have a sidewalk on which to walk. It is often difficult even for those who can cross swiftly because of the volume of the traffic and the speed of the vehicles. Allowing another business to open in this area would increase traffic volume, making this problem worse. Fourth Street is one of the most, if not the most, heavily-traveled streets in Austin. It connects the major part of the city to the south with the business areas north of I-90. It also receives a large amount of traffic coming from side streets that intersect it. Because of three fast-food restaurants and QuickTrip, the 1300 and 1400 blocks receive a great deal of traffic coming off the interstate. In our opinion, it warrants a serious traffic study before consideration of any kind of business would be added to this area. There are many locations and empty buildings already zoned for commercial use available within Austin. To cut into a residential area is unnecessary, and to cut into one that is already having traffic and pedestrian safety problems is unreasonable. Our city administrator Craig Clark told Kelly on Friday that the house on the property being considered is dilapidated, and the house will have to be torn down. This home was occupied for a number of years by the same family and was rented and deemed livable until approximately October 2017. If the house is dilapidated, it's due to owner neglect. As we visited with neighbors about this rezoning issue, we repeatedly heard concerns about the beautiful trees that fill this property. The majority of these would be removed, and although smaller trees and bushes would replace them, it's still a loss to our neighborhood. Because of foot traffic that already uses the 1400 property to access QuickTrip and the fast-food restaurants, shrubs, trees, a berm, or fence would be necessary if Gold Cross were to build there. This would mean those persons would be walking right by the windows of current property owners and present a nuisance issue and possibly a safety issue. Posting signs designating this as private property, no trespassing, has already been done and does not work. Both our home and the home directly east of us, and also adjacent to the property, sit almost on our property lines. And of course, there is the noise factor. An ambulance would have to run its lights and siren in order to access Fourth Street. It is our understanding that even if a traffic light were installed, the siren is required to trigger the light to stop traffic. You can imagine being startled any time, day or night, with a piercing siren. A fence, trees, or bushes could be added to help with the noise factor, but as we all know, a screaming siren is a screaming siren, trees or no trees. Think about your own neighborhood. To add a stoplight in this area would also require traffic to stop backing it up in both directions, which already is a problem at times. Our questions remain to be answered. Why consider residential zones when so many commercial sites are already available? And what has changed that would justify rezoning 1400 Fourth Street Northwest when the same property was denied commercial rezoning in 1999? While 1400 Fourth Street Northwest would put Gold Cross ambulance service close to Interstate 90, it would also put it north of most of the city of Austin, requiring racing down Fourth Street with sirens and/or lights to be of service to the majority of its residents, and a partial return on Fourth Street to reach the hospital, again with sirens or lights. We appreciate the services that Gold Cross provides to the residents of Austin and the surrounding area, but we believe there is a better location for their business, one that will utilize already existing commercial property and with a more central location in order to best benefit all residents of Austin. For the council's information, there is B2 community business property available at 301 Fourth Street Southwest, which has fiber optic cable available. This is a more centrally-located property...
Ma'am, I'm going to have to ask you to expedite this a little bit. We have maybe fifteen, twenty people that want to speak.
This is a more centrally-located, pardon me...
And if they all take ten, I'm going to ask you to expedite this a little bit. We have a lot of people that want to speak.
Right, I have one sentence left.
You said we'd go till midnight.
Pardon?
We're going to be here till much time.
We're not going to be here till midnight, I guarantee that.
Well, she just had one sentence left.
I just have a sentence left. Okay. Which has fiber optic cable available. This is a more centrally-located property which would provide quick access to the streets of First Avenue and Oakland as well as Fourth Street. The whole property is available for $300,000, and half of the property would be much less. Thanks for listening.
All right, thank you. I want to ask people, you know, there are neighbors here, if you want to speak to us, try and keep it to a reasonable amount of time. I mean, if everybody speaks ten or fifteen minutes, it just gets redundant after a while, especially for us. And, sir, do you want to come up here and speak?
I'm not ready.
Well, you've broken into the meeting. If you do it again, I'm going to ask you to leave. Okay? Because we have to maintain order in here, that's the one thing we're going to have. But I'm just going to ask people, you know, if we get redundant at a point, then your point becomes almost mute. Now, I've taken a new look at this with all the people here. No, Marv, if you want to come up and speak, I'll give you an opportunity. You want to come up and speak? Come and do it. We know who you are, but tell us again. Marv knows how to keep it down.
Thank you, Mayor Tom, and my apology for ruffling any feathers. It's not the first time in my life. And I want to say I really respect the presentations that have been made, including the Chief of Police and persons I respect. I feel that there have been a number of statements made here that, in my muddled thinking, kind of holds the council hostage by the arguments of when they can acquire this extra property and da-da-da-da-dum. But one of the statements have been made, by the architect and others, about the availability of any other properties that would suit the needs of Gold Cross. And as a member of nearly eight years with the Housing Authority, I have come, as a citizen of some years of this city, to know that there are other areas in this city. I'll take you on a tour that I think would be appropriate to the plan that seems to be a good plan that has been suggested. I'm just so thoughtful, though I could not with my hearing aids hear every statement that was made by the person here. But if you think it's appropriate, Mayor Tom, would there be a show of hands that you could ask for, for those who would agree with the statement that has been made of the two pages?
Okay, what you want to know is how many people...
Could we have a show of hands of those who, I think most of these people, and I've talked to, none of them about this issue? I'm speaking out of the concern over my many years in working with different communities of keeping communities as viable and beautiful and not affected by overload of traffic and all the other things. And that's why, there are reasons that have been stated that this property has enough negatives that would mean it would be appropriate to search for another location, and thank you.
Thank you, Marv. Who else would like to make, come up and make a statement? I mean, we know people don't like things built near them. I mean, we get this with absolutely everything we do, so, you know, that's called the "not-in-my-backyard" thing, I guess, whatever. But we understand that. But why, who, come on up here and give us, come on up, sir, give us your name and your address, and tell us your concerns.
Kelly Moser, live at 1304 Fourth Street. I just had a question here. Right now, Gold Cross, they've got, they've got to wait twenty minutes to go out on a call because they don't have staff? Is that what you were saying? I just, I didn't realize...
In the last probably four months, I met, and my captain met with the supervisor for Gold Cross, and I pointed out, I believe it was six, calls for service where it took between twenty and thirty-three minutes for an ambulance to arrive.
Because they were understaffed?
Well, obviously, that's part of the problem, because, in her speaking, was they've had recruits come to Austin, see the facilities, and they don't see them again, because they won't work in the current conditions that we have.
Oh, okay. So that's, yeah, it's not the, okay, it's a...
It's not the norm, no. It's not the norm, but...
Yeah, but it's not, that shouldn't be our problem. Gold Cross should be, I mean, they should have people, I mean, no matter what, they could get them hired, I would think. That's just my thought, you know?
It's not really your problem, but it's a city problem. It's a problem for, you know, for the police department and the citizens.
Well, no, I realize that, but I mean, I didn't know that, but that's, I mean...
I didn't either until recently.
I'm just going to...
I didn't even know about this issue until a couple weeks ago, and the city administrator talked to me, and I just, I assumed it would not be a big problem.
There's where they want to put, okay? Where are all the people? This is where they're located right now, okay? And, I mean, I would think the majority, they'd try to be, try to be down where they could, there's no sense running clear down here and then running all the way back up Fourth Street. I mean, that, you've got the sirens going twice to get back up to the hospital. My, you know, I thought maybe there's anybody, it looked to me like you could be better off in the central.
Do you remember about ten years ago when they were, they were building a justice center, and the sheriffs and the police department were almost moving south of the airport? And we were going to have both the police and the sheriff's department potentially located south of the airport? And they were telling us that was a good location, which I never bought into, obviously, but...
Right. Well, I'm just, I'm just saying that's taken enough time. And then I, oh, that chart he had where it was all a minute, he had a minute if it was up there, but then they had us show to a whole bunch of places how many he calls. Well, there's a lot of calls south of that. I don't know what, well, that little pink job that he had up there was, was, it just said it was a minute zone, I mean, minute to get there. Well, if it was down here, it'd be a minute to get there, too. I mean, compared to, you can't see the picture, but they ended up, all the calls were, I mean, there was a lot of calls all over the place here, and it looked like there's very many up in the front. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. I know back years ago when they were located downtown, and, I mean, the ambulance would beat the police department, it was the norm for the ambulance to get there before the police department. I assume that's not the case anymore, is, would that be correct, Chief?
Your effect.
Okay. And really, the police are somewhat limited in what they can do as far as first aid and stuff, where the ambulance, I mean, a lot of times they're just waiting for the ambulance people to get there so they can start the real medical procedures. Okay, I know we have more people that would like to talk, I don't want you to be shy. We want to hear from you. I know a lot of people, how many people don't want it just because they live by it, they don't want the activity in their area? And that's understandable. I mean, that's a legitimate concern, you know, especially with sirens going on and stuff. When this thing started, I thought it was going to pass, I was surprised when they told me that it didn't pass the planning commission, but that's why we're here. Sir, give us your name and your address, please.
My name is John Limerick, and I've been a citizen of Austin for seventy-nine years.
Clear now.
1301 Third Street Northwest. Street houses from where the proposed ambulance garage is going to be located. My only concern is I want to contradict one thing, that the property values are not going to change. When Hardee's came in two or three years ago, our market value on our taxes went down $18,000. I don't mind paying poor taxes, but that's...
What year was that? That was like four or five years ago?
Right.
Is that directly related to Hardee's opening, or is that because of the general market and the conditions at that time?
That's just what I was going to say.
As far as I am concerned, it was Hardee's that brought in it. The whole area turned into be commercial.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? We want to hear from you. And I'll tell you, talking to the council, I think it might have made a difference already, but it makes a difference... but it makes a difference, sir.
Just a quick, quick statement, Mayor Stein.
Need your name and...
Joel Reiman, 1404 Second Street Northwest. I'm in my second property in that neighborhood now over 12 years.
1404, is it, is that a house or...?
It is a house. It's basically straight across to the east. So, I'm not adjacent to the property, but in that area, it's not too far.
Yep.
Based on the presentation from Gold Cross, a unit of Mayo saying they were surprised that there would be opposition, I would just like to encourage Mayo to start engaging the community early on. I was involved in a four, over $4 million building project in St. Paul. It was a fraternity house. We engaged the building process in that community early on. I guess in the future, Mayo's tearing down the neighborhood next to their house, they need to get the point, they need to start engaging the neighbors. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And like I say, it's a legitimate concern. Anybody from the, well, first we want to see if anybody said their last say. If you have something to say, come on up. I mean, we, we want to hear from you. I'm sorry if I was a little, we don't want to hear from you for 15, 20 minutes, but we want to hear from everybody if possible. Sir, come on up.
If you're not coming up, I want to ask one question. Are you guys elected by the public?
That's right.
Are you elected by the public?
You have to state your name for the record.
You want to state your name for the record?
My name is Rick Hudson, 1304 Third.
Okay, thank you. Council? Okay.
All right, this is awkward. Kyle Keenan, 310 12th Place Northwest. First of all, I didn't understand what the conditional use permit was. How would that affect this? Laura?
The planning and zoning would have much more ability to regulate things like trees and bushes and the appearance. It would, it would give, as the architect mentioned, they're willing to make the changes that, that citizens and the city are requesting. But through the conditional use permit, those would be actually part of legal. We have legal teeth and maybe Hallie can speak to it better than I can.
A conditional use permit is a use that's allowed in the zoning district, but with conditions. So, our planning commission would tend to say, yes, that's a, that's an okay thing to put in that area, but with conditions to mitigate some of the issues that might come up with neighboring properties. Those conditions are put into a conditional use permit and are recorded with the county. If there are violations of those conditional uses, there would be another public hearing to potentially revoke the conditional use. But we don't see that. I've never had anyone make a complaint to which a conditional use was subject to revocation. The people that have the conditional use permit tend to comply with that. That's, but the current facility, the Mayo Facility Mayo Clinic, is in a residential area with a conditional use permit. And every time that they do a project, they have to come back to have their conditional use amended. And so that is what creates the opportunity, I guess, for the public to have more input or more comments on those projects.
And the conditional use permit is with the, it stays with the owner? So, when that owner leaves or sells that property...
That's not, actually, it stays with the property.
Stays with the property.
It stays with the property. So, if another ambulance, but it's, it's a specific use typically. So, if the use were to change, there would have to be an amendment of the conditional use permit.
So, if, if, for instance, in 30 years, Gold Cross left and a restaurant wanted to buy the property, they would have to either get a new conditional use permit or get it rezoned?
In this, that instance, that use is not allowed in residential, even as a conditional use, so they would have to ask for a rezone.
So, if they applied for a conditional use permit, they would be able to, still be able to build?
Well, the planning and zoning would review it first and then it comes to the city council.
Doesn't the planning commission approve conditional use? The planning commission would be the final decision maker on a conditional use permit unless it is appealed to the council, which could be either by the petitioner or by the opponent.
So, the arguments against this by the planning commission, how many of them would the conditional use permit alleviate? Any of them?
I mean, the...
The reasons that the planning commission said no? I mean, I know there was a range of...
I think, I, I did talk briefly to some of our planning commissioners, but, you know, unless they want to, you know, I guess testify themselves, there was some concern as councilperson Hallie mentioned that, that it would be open to any use, potentially, that would be allowed in a commercial district.
How many people here that don't want it in the area would a conditional use permit sway you to the other side? I mean, these people would still be here if we were going under the conditional use permit? Pretty sure. Pardon? How many, how many, if we, now, we're talking conditional use permit. Is there anybody here that would change their opinion of this project if we, they were to build it with a conditional use permit instead of the way it is now? See, it's still going to be there and you're still not going to like it. Okay.
I think, you know, I think we're dealing with a business that's been in this community for over 20-some years, that will probably be here forever as long as there's a need for ambulance service in this town. They've said they want to be a good neighbor. I would think if you want trees, if you want berms, whatever you want, I think they're going to do it. I guess in my opinion, the conditional use permit is not going to change anything that happens with this project. And apparently, I mean, it's not swaying any of the neighbors, obviously. You know, obviously, rezoning, I mean, I'm very torn because, I mean, I rely on our planning commission to recommend, make their recommendations to council. And in my time on the, on the council, 12 years or better now, I, I hardly can remember...
One time I can remember.
One time, I think, in 12 years that we've gone against the recommendation of the planning commission. And I don't know if any of this new information that Gold Cross presented tonight would have swayed them or changed their vote at all. And a lot of what I'm hearing, I guess, is the NIMBY syndrome, not in my backyard. I mean, the ambulance service isn't new to town. They run day and night, lights and sirens. The location they're at right now is probably have more density for housing, more neighbors that would be affected by lights and sirens than this new location they're talking about. And as far as other property, I mean, I have a hard time believing that this gentleman comes up here and says that they've spent 18 months doing their due diligence, looking at other properties, that they have not looked at any of the properties that you've mentioned. I listened, I wasn't able to be at the planning commission, but I did watch the video on our YouTube channel. I heard similar arguments there that, you know, go here, go Hy-Vee, go north. Who's to say that the people that own those properties want to sell them? The outlaw in front of ShopCo has got encumbrances on it that they couldn't ever build there if they did buy it. I understand your concerns about being in the neighborhood as far as property values. What affects your property values more than anything is the sale of similar property in town. Somebody moving in, I would have thought Hardee's probably would have raised your property values because you got an empty lot, now you've got property on it that's paying property taxes. My value of my home has fluctuated over the years and I've had nothing happen in my neighborhood. I live in a residential area and it's based on like sales. If houses similar to yours sell in this town and they don't sell for as much as the assessor has them valued at, your property is going to go down. If they sell for more, your property is going to go up. It's not necessarily what happens exactly next door to your property. I would think that if this property is dilapidated, it would be an improvement to have a business build there. But like I say, I'm very torn because the planning commission did note that this property or this rezoning did not fit our future land use, and they didn't feel that it met the conditions necessary to recommend rezoning.
And I think everything we do, you have to weigh the general public good against the few people, the people that live around that. Now, if this was next to my house, I might be in here, in here too, sitting here saying, I don't want it next to my house. But at the same time, we have to weigh the general good of the city and the population. I think we know Mayo Clinic, we know Gold Cross. If there's an issue with Mayo Clinic, if somebody, one of the neighbors calls me up and says, we're having this issue, we can go right to them and take care of that issue. We know from our history with them that they'd be very receptive to anything that we brought forward to them. Something moves in there later that we have no connection with or, you know, they could just say, hey, you know, too bad, this is what we got and this is our agreement and this is what we're going to do. That would be very advantageous to us, I think, right? You know, it's a small thing for you people, but it means a lot to us because we know that these are people we can work with. I was surprised by the planning commission's vote on this. I mean, I think this is not perfect, but I think it's the best location we're going to come up with.
What's their second location choice? There must have been a second and a third in what was wrong with those locations. Is it a financial...
I don't know.
Well, we need to know that.
No, I, we don't, no, we need to know what, what we're talking about is this site.
The representative from Blue Cross is acting like if this doesn't go through, he's threatening that service will be down, everything's going to be in turmoil. There must be a second and third choice.
I think their plan B is to stay right where they are and not be able to attract new employees and not be able to staff and run into a situation that...
I have a real hard time believing that. Everyone has a second and third choice.
You weren't here for the early part of his presentation, were you? You came in late.
I bet you $2 million is the second and third choice, and they need to go to those choices. If it's a financial issue, then Mayo or whoever's backing this project needs to pay up.
I don't think it's a financial issue.
You're talking about big business versus the common citizen.
That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about...
That's what I'm talking about.
That's what you're talking about.
That's why we're here.
Right.
Because we see big business, our big corporation, coming into our neighborhood when we don't want them to. We don't have $2 million to buy that land or, I don't know what they're paying for it.
$250,000.
Okay. Maybe we should get together and, maybe we should. It's very disrespectful to have all of you standing up or sitting up here acting like our, oh, not in your neighborhood syndrome. None of you would want it in your neighborhood and you know it.
You might be right, but we still have to do what's in the best interest of the citizens of Austin.
So, I just have to say, I feel like the conditional use permit would probably not change the opinions of the neighborhood, but it would give the city legal recourse for, for Gold Cross to do what they're promising. If we rezone and Gold Cross comes back in in two weeks and says, yeah, I know we said we'd plant some bushes, but it's out of our budget now, we have nothing to go back to. And that, and from what I heard, planning and zoning commissioners say, this project doesn't meet the high level of rezoning, but with the conditional use permit tool, we can have some of those things that are promises today be written down, feet held to the fire, and it's a protection for the community as well as the neighbors. That's, that's why I'm advocating conditional use. I, I, I feel like you're right. The neighbors aren't going to, are going to change their opinion based on which tool we're using. I just think it's more appropriate and gives us more protections as a community that this builder's going to do what they say they're going to do.
Ma'am, you had your hand up again. Well, whoever, come on up here. It looks like we got a couple people.
I mentioned this at the last meeting and I'll mention it again.
Need your name and your address.
Okay. Adam Ansorge, 314th Place Northwest. So, I mentioned this at the last meeting and I'll mention it again, is that, yes, it's true, part of it's not in my backyard, for sure. That's why we're here. But if we look at it also from a city standpoint, I would say that, and maybe this has already been mentioned, I'm sure part of it has, but my point is that we're talking about the, perhaps the busiest city street in Austin. From the freeway to the corner where you turn for the hospital, that is a very busy zone. And so we're, we're talking about putting in a zone where ambulances will be coming in about 12 times per day, in and out. Some of those will be emergencies, some of them won't. But every time it's an emergency, what's going to happen is the light's going to come on, the siren's going to come on, and every single car that's on that street right there is going to have to six, minimum of, about six times per day, minimum. Okay? So, that's kind of my point, is we're making the busiest street in Austin a little bit more hectic. And is that one of our...
Aren't, aren't they traveling on that street now when they come back into town?
Occasionally, only, only when it's...
They're going to Mayo, they're going to the hospital.
Only when it's involved in that area of the city. The rest of the time, they're going to the other areas of the city. So, they're not always using that street. They're only using a portion of the, of the time.
Well, they're using most of the street.
They'd be using that street every single time from now on. So, you're talking the busiest part of the town becoming busier. Okay? So, that's my point.
Okay. If I could, Mr. Mayor. I don't think it's going to, I mean, I was, drove a squad car for 15 years and I don't think that it's going to cause, I don't think I've ever caused an accident with red lights and sirens, maybe. Ma'am, come on up here. Give us your name and your...
Let me be short, it's Yvonne Riley.
It's all right.
Live at 1302 Fourth Street Northwest.
And your name is what?
Yvonne Riley Lee.
Okay.
And I just wanted to add to what his comment was, and that is that my estimation would be that you need four, four lanes there if Gold Cross would come in, because if all these cars have to pull off to the side, there's not enough room for traffic flow at all. And, you know, we're, we live there, we're used to helicopters going over, et cetera. So, I'm not panicked by noise necessarily, but the traffic flow, I think, on Fourth Street is the biggest issue.
It's a lot of traffic on it. It probably is the busiest street. I avoid it when I can. I can take two ways home and I always take four feet if I can.
And I'm right across from Subway, so you've got to get in and out. And I notice without Gold Cross being there, they could use it, another lane.
It's a legitimate concern.
Thank you.
Steve, did you have something?
Yeah, please. To me, life is about balance. And what I witness here and what I hear here is we're out of balance. And Adam, I'll do you one, one greater. That Fourth Street is, I would hazard a guess that it is the busiest street in Austin, but I'll take it down a few blocks. That intersection or whatever you call it, and the end drives of Quick Trip, of Burger King, Subway, is a disaster trying to get in and out of. It's a disaster. But you go past the hospital and you go down to Fourth Street, Fourth Avenue, St. Augustine's Church, High School, Pacelli High School, and try to get out on that intersection at 3 o'clock and at 5 o'clock in the afternoon. Having that intersection not too far away from this prospective building site, as these ambulances are coming and going, red lights or not, 2,000 times a year, you are going to have people stopped intermittently, creating more congestion all the way down the, the street. Again, we are, this is out of, out of balance. I would love to have a $2.2 million project in Austin. I'd love to have Gold Cross be accommodated. I, if this site can't be configured right or this road, and I don't, even before I came to the next meeting, when I first heard this site, I was like, you know, when I drive that road coming back from Hy-Vee, it is maddening. That intersection is maddening. I don't even go to Quick Trip there because I can't get out of it. I don't go to Hardee's because I can't get out of there.
Right.
And to have a, have this be the site, regardless of any other presentation, any other, any other comments that were made today, I was like, that couldn't be a worse site for anybody coming and going. And again, Fourth Street down that chain towards St. Augustine's, Pacelli and Austin High is a disaster on top of it. So, I am conflicted like Mr. Austin because I, I put a lot of faith into our planning commission who voted 9-0 to not have this. And these are folks charged with really getting to the nuts and bolts of the issue. And I'm conflicted because our chief, who I love, is saying this is a good site. And sir, to your comment, are we elected by the public? Yes, but we have to look at the whole city. This is a tough, tough deal, but again, to me, the balance part is, is what I go back to. And again, Gold Cross, I hope if this site doesn't work out, that you can find a different site that makes more sense. But I, I can't vote in favor of this project just because of that location is, is, is maddening to me right now.
I would like to second that. He said exactly what I would have said.
I guess one thing about the traffic is, I mean, we're not talking about a business that people are going to be getting in their cars and driving to. None of us probably will ever drive to Gold Cross ambulance unless we're going there to apply for a job or going there to go to an open house. The only added traffic is their ambulances coming out of their facility onto Fourth Street, which I'm, would venture to guess that probably 60% or more of their calls now, they travel from the interstate to the hospital somewhere on Fourth Street at this present time. I guess I, I don't see that we're adding any traffic necessarily to already heavily trafficked road. And I guess a lot of the concerns I felt Mr. Keltzer answered, I mean, they like to be on a main... be on a main arterial road. You don't want your ambulance service coming from some back neighborhood where they have to make several turns before they can get to a main road. I think you would want them there. If they are having trouble, I mean, I guess one other point I wanted to make, too, when it comes to this not in my backyard situation that I've experienced, is that we've had people come before us on issues similar to this, and that, you know, I plan to live in my house forever, I'm gonna, I'm gonna die here. And so, you know, you take that to heart, and you vote accordingly, and two years later, you find out that they moved, or something happened. And, you know, how many of us are gonna, can say with certainty where we will be in five years from now?
I just wanna add that, of course, we want a viable location for Gold Cross, and we absolutely need Gold Cross. And that kind of investment in a, in a facility would be terrific. I have a very difficult time. I also served on the planning commission for many years before I got elected to city council. We have a, we have a planning commissioner here, could maybe answer a question or two if that came up. But the issue still for me is that the planning commission voted unanimously in opposition to this location. When I was on the planning commission, I had really serious concerns about the addition of Burger King and then Hardee's. I wasn't on the, Hardee's has been since I've been on council. But, you know, that, that is such a congested area, and I live right by St. Asen, Pacelli, and I know what it's like to make a left on, you know, to turn there at the stoplight. I gotta use the stoplight, or you could maybe never get across. So it is an issue with, you know, pulling over for the emergency vehicles. I just, that's why, as I stated earlier at the very beginning of the meeting, that I'm, conflicted, I'm confused by the fact that this is like the one and only viable spot for this facility. And I do understand that it's great to be on an arterial road, but it's not the only arterial road.
All right, if nobody else, I mean, I've been here long enough. Ma'am, can you come up here?
My name is Carol Limbrick, and I live at 1301 Third Street, Northwest. And I don't think anyone is stressed how much we hear the helicopter. Every time the helicopter comes into the hospital, every time the helicopter leaves the hospital, we have that noise. And if it comes directly over our house, boy, you know the helicopter's there. And now we're gonna add in sirens. And we can say, oh, but it's just a few, it's only like 1.8 or something at night. And it's just another addition of noise pollution, and that's all I have to say.
Okay. Anybody else?
I agree with Councilmember Austin in the fact that I don't think Austin, that the traffic is gonna be an issue. As the architect stated, the way they build them, they build them close to the road, so when they have to go, they're right there, they're on Fourth Street in seconds. I think as far as the neighborhood, there could be something worse that could go in there. It sounds like Gold Cross is more than willing to do whatever it's gonna take to make it nice.
Corey Brunton. I would, I would agree with that, Councilmember. We will make any accommodations imposed upon us for this project today that we would be having conversations about in one month from today. We have no problems with conditions upon which we get our plan reviewed by your inspection department. And anything we've already done, I think it shows good faith in that. One thing that I'd like to bring up, this is a little low for me. If traffic was such a difficulty, Hardee's would not survive. If every one of you decided that you could not make that turnout or turn into Hardee's, you'd shut that business down just by acts of saying, you know what, it's too difficult, I can't get in there. The same can be said for, for the QuickTrip that's across the street and all the other businesses that are there. And I'm not, I'm not downplaying it, I'm simply saying that this is even gonna be less of an issue traffic-wise, because an ambulance coming out with lights on, they get your, they get your attention. And this site is perfect for viewability and for safety and for safe egress of an ambulance out onto the street. The comment was made, there's not enough room. That's not true. The ambulance can occupy, I don't wanna call it a suicide lane, because I don't know what it's called, but the center...
Don't call it the suicide lane.
I won't call that. The lane down, the lane down the middle, they can occupy that.
Turning lane.
Right. People, people move over for ambulances, that's, that happens everywhere. And to have a business like this, that's gonna have as few calls as they do, exiting safely to provide service to your community, is the key. Now, I totally understand the not in my backyard concept, but I just wanted to talk to those two points, that traffic is probably not a real major concern. I get it that, and I'm from town, I mean, I, I get it that the street is busy. But I think coming out with lights on is gonna certainly make getting access easier.
I think if this is already, and what people tell us, it's almost a dangerous area. Chief, do we have more, how many accidents have we had in that area? Any, is it higher than any other area, or is it exceptionally high? Do we do special patrol there because it is a high-traffic area?
I would have to say, overall, that we do have accidents there, but probably no more than West Oakland Avenue and Fourth Street, West Oakland Avenue and 12th Street, 14th Street by the college. I don't have statistics or numbers off the top of my head, but the only other thing, again, I wanted to add, and again, this is just from a law enforcement perspective, like he said earlier, I believe it's 12 ambulance service calls per day. Six or better of those are non-emergencies, so they will take their time coming out, waiting to get into the flow of traffic. So you're talking five, 5.2, I believe he said, emergency calls in a 24-hour day. 1.7, 1.8 of those overnight. I know plenty of people working for Gold Cross, and their objective is not to go lights and siren at 2, 3, 4:00 in the morning when there's no traffic. They will drive with lights, no siren, to get out of the area, to get to the call they need to go to. And if they get on the freeway or further out on West Oakland where they can go maybe a little faster, because it's two lanes one way, they're able to do that. So we're realistically talking about five emergency calls a day. So three of those during the daylight, when lights and siren may come on. So obviously, coming from the public safety side, I don't feel that that is an overburden for this area.
And I think people have to understand, if Gold Cross doesn't go here, what do we do in a year when somebody else wants to come here that's not gonna be a good neighbor as Gold Cross is? And they go to the planning commission and they get approved. Obviously, everybody's gonna be back here, but, you know, at some point, we may have to say yes to something that isn't near, you know, that's what we've seen in the past. You know, you don't put a certain thing in, and then years later, something else moves there, and the neighbors come up and say, oh, we would've been better off with Gold Cross, or whoever. I mean, that's certainly something you have to look at. I think, as far as the safety and everything, it's, the only real factor that we're talking in here that I consider is the not in my backyard. People don't want it. And at certain point, I mean, if you get 50% of the city of Austin that comes in here and says, no, we're gonna say no. If you get two people coming in and say, we don't want it, we're probably gonna say yes. So, I mean, it makes a difference when people come in, and I think, you know, you may have made a difference tonight. I think I know where this is going, so, you know, if anybody else wants to talk, but I pretty much guarantee you, the council's made up their mind by now. Okay? So let's have a resolution, a very clear resolution, one way or the other.
Motion.
A motion. We need a motion to either back up the planning commission and say, no, it's not at this time, or to go ahead with the project.
I'd make the motion that we go ahead with the planning commissions.
We support the planning commission and not okay the change in the zoning. Is there a second?
Your honor, I think you should phrase that, make the motion deny the application for rezoning.
That's what you said, right, Steve?
I will make the motion that we deny the application for rezoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay. So, now, you know what that means, right? You're not gonna get Gold Cross at this time. That doesn't mean that they're not gonna come back and negotiate a conditional use permit, which really wouldn't make much difference to you, but it might swing enough votes on the council to put that in. That would be, you know, if I was you, that's something you have to think about.
Didn't you say that, well, unless somebody appeals, correct?
Correct.
So, I mean, we wouldn't have to act on the, necessarily have to act on the conditional use permit.
Correct. The planning commission would make the final decision, but it could be appealed to council.
So you may very well end up, I mean, it's, isn't necessarily a done issue. But thank you for coming, everybody. And like I say, I think you probably made a difference in this tonight, so you can feel good about that. And that's what the system is for.
I don't know, should we take a break, or should we keep going?
Why don't we take a five, 10-minute break before we start the rest of the agenda?
Can you feel the start?
Yeah, yeah.
He said by his own argument that it's gonna require $200,000 investment.
Nobody's been about it.
If you get $450,000, if the numbers are...